No. Go. You can begin.
Before we start this meeting, would you lead us in a prayer?
Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. We thank you, Father God, for the many blessings and the favor that you give our city. We thank you, Father God, that you walk in with us hand in hand, directing us and guiding us through everything that we face. We pray, Father God, for all our city, all the people in our community, that you bless them, that you protect them, that you guide them, Father God, that you draw them closer to yourself, Father God, and that you give the council wisdom, Father God, to make decisions that will be good and beneficial for the city of Grants. Thank you, Father God, for today. Thank you for the many blessings you bring into our life. Amen.
We'll call this meeting to order at six o'clock straight up and down. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Councillor Rodarte.
Present.
Councillor Garcia.
Present.
Councillor Lucero. Councillor Padilla.
Where's Fred going?
He's standing up over there.
Okay, Fred's present. Will you please stand and join me on the Pledge of Legions?
A pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda of, what was it, four two twenty twenty? Or the agenda for tonight, I should say.
There you go. Second. Fred seconded it. Councillor Rodarte.
Aye.
Councillor Garcia. Councillor Lucero. Councillor Padilla. Thank you. Citizens to address the council. Did we get anything?
No.
Okay. First one, hearing item, public comment discussion on two applications for national assistance from USDA for rural development water systems and water systems or the old wastewater treatment trans on the west end area of Grants. Obviously, we don't have nobody here for a hearing because it's a closed, basically a closed meeting. Did we get anybody saying against it in the city council floor? Did we get anybody saying they didn't want this?
No.
No? Okay.
Mayor Hicks?
Yeah.
Uh, this is Don. I guess I got him in. You guys earlier on the new road, you guys beginning to look at the like or you're doing any applications? One of the water system, one for the wastewater system. Uh, we've fulfilled and completed those applications. They were just started in two weeks ago. One of the requirements is to hold a public hearing for case there's any discussion or any comments that the public wants to get or if the council has any questions in regard to where we're at on that particular project. So the two applications were turned in two weeks ago. We're going for two USDA grants. Mark Nasty with Loson Company is on the line right now. If you guys have any questions or you guys want to have any discussion in regards to those two applications.
Any questions?
Are these federal grants or these state?
In our USDA.
USDA.
Uh, one of the requirements tried to determine the application of the PDR wastewater and a PDR water system. So we've completed those two PDRs in which uh we had a lot of little issues in the old Grant area. So that's the target of the first area because that's obviously that's the old part right now. So when we went to the application during and it's the water and wastewater and our other grants. Okay, Don?
What was it?
Uh, we had an email out to our object and get things and further states. We just need to get all the grants. Do I know that as a moment? I think that's what we can also do with the Joe moment and that's the old part of town. So we're like, they can give me some comment.
Yeah, that's the Long Santa Fe Avenue there and it's a replacement, uh, with water and sewer line. That's the oldest part of Grants that was built in the thirties and forties. And we're continuing on with Don's group to evaluate the several other areas throughout the city from the west to the east.
Now, on this grant, Don, what are we talking on that west of the town? Are we talking finishing that project from Palters up to the... Where we did the engineering work that we already paid for, of course, it's probably no good and there's been a lot.
This is totally related with what we're looking at, the water and wastewater systems in the most critical areas. So the PDR, uh, well, Mark, do you want to explain about how we found the most critical areas?
You know, your fire department did a FOSSA on some of your hydrants and they have some low pressure. So we're going to increase some of the line sizes along Santa Fe Avenue, go across the interstate there on the west side of town to help some low pressures in the quail run area. It was identified by Don and Markish. And it will be, these grants, these loan grants are five million dollars each, just under five million dollars. And they should be approved and processed through USDA by mid May or by the end of May and you'll know for sure. They actually, you know, if it's been approved and then we'll finish the dis- area on the west end of town.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll declare the hearing shutdown at six oh seven PM. And we'll open up the public meeting. First item for the public meeting is public comment and discussion on charter compliance. Obviously, there's nobody here to say we're not in compliance, but we are. So that's a good thing. Approval of regular city council meeting minutes from four to twenty twenty.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for April second of twenty twenty.
Second. Councillor Rodarte.
Aye.
Councillor Garcia. Councillor Lucero. Councillor Padilla. Hopefully, guys, next month, we won't be doing this normally and we'll all be here in the chamber together. Okay?
That'd be fine by me.
Yeah, it may not be the first meeting, but we will be back in the chamber next month. Okay, next item. Audit report fiscal year nineteen. Kimberly, you gonna handle that? Is the auditor online? I don't see no face. I can hear you, but I don't see no face. Are you David Baca? No, I can't see you.
Hear you, but can't see you.
Mark, are you gonna put our PowerPoint on?
Uh, I'm on my iPhone. I don't know if I can run it from my iPhone. Can you run it from there?
I need the, uh, he's on his iPhone. I need the file, the presentation. He said he's on his iPhone and can't run it.
Okay, so what, you have to send it to your email address then? Actually, it should be on the, it's on the, it's on the city website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'll send it in a minute. We uploaded it.
Okay, very good.
Smile, Donald, come on, dude. That's better, eh? That's better, man. How good, dude? Hey, Donald, how long you been growing that beard? Pick your head up a little bit, let me see that. How long you been growing that?
Seriously.
Seriously, how long you been growing that?
Two years.
Two years, so you got a whole year on me. I'm gonna catch up and I'm gonna pass you, buddy. Hey, did you see Rick's trying to catch up to us, bro? This is a little bit whiter than mine and yours, though. Are we ready, Mark? Where we at? Gina Square Way.
Do you want me to just go ahead and start?
Yeah, go ahead and start. We'll flip through the, we got the pages here in front of us. Go ahead. When you're ready to flip the change there, David, let us know.
All right, so right now I'm on the second page which says modified opinion.
Okay.
So normally you want an unmodified opinion. It's the best you can get, but in this case you have a modified opinion. And the reason we have a modified opinion, which is a little bit below what you want, is because we have problems with our capital assets and it's been a annoying situation here for a couple of years. The city is not maintaining records relevant to capital assets. And the data is in the process of getting everything into your new software, but you have not all your capital assets are in your software yet. And you haven't done an inventory in a while and you haven't reconciled your records. So that's why there's a modified opinion on the capital assets. So on the same regard, we'll talk about it later, but there's an audit finding on capital assets because of these records were not properly maintained.
Did you figure out how far back that went?
The audit finding was written in two thousand seventeen. This is when it first showed up.
In two thousand seventeen?
So it's for the seventeen audit, the eighteen audit, the nineteen audit, our capital assets have not been reconciled.
But they're reconciled now, right?
They will be for fiscal year twenty.
Okay, Kimberly says yeah, they will be. Okay, thank you, Kimberly.
I know they were working on doing an inventory. I know they were working on inputting the data into the new software. And I know they're working with the other accounting firm to get everything reconciled. So hopefully by June thirtieth of twenty, it'll be done. But it's up June thirty nineteen, it was not done.
Is that the reason, I'll let you see here. Is that the reason why we have a modified opinion is because all the data hasn't been put in place? That what you're saying?
That's correct. It's not been reconciled. It's, it's basically we couldn't audit it in the state that it was in. So we're saying everything else is good, but we just did not come to an opinion on capital assets. There just wasn't enough support.
Okay, but we're taking care of that. Go ahead.
All right, let's switch pages. Let's go to the next page. So in our audit report, uh, there's three audit reports. There's the independent auditors report, which was, we just talked about, and that's the front of the report. And we gave you a modified opinion. And then there's another report towards the end of the audit report called the GAGAS report, which is a governmental auditing standards report. And in that report, we list your compliance with state and federal compliance. And then the other report on the right hand side is called the report on compliance for each federal, each major federal program. So that's what we call a single audit. You haven't had a single audit in a while. So what triggers a single audit is if you have seven hundred fifty thousand or more in federal dollars expended each year. So for nineteen, you guys hit that threshold, so we had to do a single audit for that point. And that triggers a third audit report, just compliance federal compliance.
And that's that stuff that, Laura, that's the stuff that Mr. Jenkins was talking about? All the federal compliance with federal dollars?
And so, yeah, several of the money that we get, lots of money are federal. So if we get over seven hundred thousand or did you say seven fifty?
Seven fifty.
Then you, they do a better check on your finances.
Okay. I'm good with that, since we have Kimberly. I wasn't good with it before she came. Go ahead, there, Dave.
With respect to federal awards, last year we audited the clean water program and we did not have any audit findings related to that program, so that's good. Okay, let's switch pages. Matters to be communicated. So our auditing standards require us to communicate with the members of governance at the end of the audit. And one of the things we're required to communicate to the governing board is whether there was any significant difficulties that we encountered during the audit. And on that report, we did not have any significant difficulties, but we're required to just let you know about that.
That'll work.
Next page. Matters to be communicated. Another thing we're supposed to talk to you about is if there's any significant audit adjustments. So we did, you guys did have another auditing firm help you get to the audit. Uh, we went in, however, we did come up with some adjustments that we still had to make on top of what they helped Kimberly put together. So we had a sizable adjustment to your taxes receivable and to your accounts payable at the end of the year. Kimberly has agreed to those adjustments and you guys, the city, has now posted those adjustments. So the financials on your end, the actual financials on our end. Any questions on this?
You know, I appreciate you coming in because those last auditors maybe not do their job. That's why we brought you in. So I appreciate you guys doing it.
You guys are making progress and hopefully, you know, after this next audit, you guys will be back in shape. But, you know, still right now, we still gotta get our capital assets fixed. Uh, you guys are working on your, still completing your conversion to a new software program and that's always a big job. And I think you guys are still working on the tail end of that.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Okay, let's go to the next page, disagreements with management. So once again, this is a required closure that we're supposed to discuss with the governing board. And at the report, we had no disagreements with manager, with management. Uh, Lori, Laura and Kim just improved work with, uh, they've been able to backwards to help us and it was a good experience.
Cool. It's been a good experience for me, too.
Okay, let's go to the next page. This page is called result findings. So this page is good that it lists, uh, five audit findings on this page. And all the findings on this page were corrected as June thirtieth nineteen, so that's a good thing. So some of the problems we had before was cash wasn't reconciled finally. We had problems with cash disbursements. We had prior period adjustments and we had a late audit and all that's been corrected, so that's good. Okay, let's go to the next page. Current year findings. So we did have four audit findings this year. Uh, capital assets. So that was a very serious finding. It's such a serious finding that we call it a material weakness. And that's why we had to modify the audit opinion, which we discussed earlier. The next audit finding is deficit fund balance. And that means is several of your funds had a negative balance at year end. I'm thinking a lot of this is attributable to you guys were in the middle of a software conversion. I don't think you guys had the opportunity to clean up all your accounts the way you wanted them to be. So I'm hoping by this next audit, um, we'll have funds that don't have a deficit fund balance. And you can either, Kim can fix that by transferring money still from the general funds to some of these other funds that have a negative fund balance. But you guys had so many problems you were dealing with last year and this one kind of fell to the cracks.
I mean, just, can I add something there real quick?
You bet you got something, kids.
So actually, Chris and I just talked about this. He's the other, uh, he's the head of, uh, he owns Patillo and Brown.
Yeah.
Who are our auditors. And he and I actually just talked about this this morning. One of the problems is DFA, the report that we're gonna go over later, they want us to, we operate on a cash basis. The problem is that the end of the year, we have accruals in our accounts payable, money we owe out, accounts receivable, money we're getting in, that we have to account for. We have payroll, you know, as of June thirtieth, we have payroll that we're gonna have to pay into the next month. Well, the reports that I do for DFA all year long are cash, so they don't include those numbers that are gonna have to be paid in July. And so I didn't know that. Um, and so that's what, after we got the audit finding, the outside, the other accounting firm who's been helping us, um, they helped me figure those out. So that this year, I don't know, I've gotta record all those accruals, which then will in turn make, we'll have to do transfers into those funds so that we don't have those negative balances. So we had no negative balances based on cash type of accounting, but we turned it into an accrual and we've got to account for that. So anyways.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, so our next audit finding was budget overage. Our Fund twenty one four hundred is Rogers Tax Fund and we seek a budget. We spent more money than we budgeted. So that's probably just an oversight probably year end. We just need to pay a little more attention to make sure that our budget is in compliance.
Next.
Do what?
Any comment?
Um, actually, it's kind of the same thing with that. It's not because it's cash and accrual, but it's because we make sure that our cash is balanced all year long and then we get to the end. And if we're over, it did never even occur to me that we need to do anything with that. But that's, that actually is, and the other thing is the first year and a half I was here, we never had any budget overages in, in the cash side of things. We actually do tonight for the third quarter, so we're gonna be, uh, getting real familiar with that. But, um, but it's okay. It's okay if we have a budget overage. If we have a budget overage, it's okay as long as we do a budget adjustment that gets approved by the council.
Hang on just a minute, Dave.
And gets approved by the state. And so that will happen. So it's okay if we do go over in our budget, we just have to get approval on it from the council as well as the state and that will happen.
And that's what we did use.
Yes, and that's what's later on this week.
Any questions so far? Go ahead, Dave.
All right, uh, the final finding, uh, has to do with the completion of your federal form I nine. Uh, we did a sample twenty five personnel files and in three of those files, um, the I nines are not completed properly. For example, one employee did not sign his I nine, uh, another employee did not date his I nine. And in the other form, there was no dates by the employee or the employer indicating when that form was generated. In the scheme of things, this is a really minor finding, but as auditors were required to report to you anything that we did find. So this one is easily correctable and I'm sure it'll be corrected by the next audit.
I'm sure it's already been corrected. Next.
Next page. Thank you. I wonder if there are any questions that you guys want to have at this point?
Questions, Fred?
Turn this thing on here. Okay, the only thing that I was, uh, thinking about concerning that, so a lot of, a lot of the stuff that you discussed here can easily be made with the data, data input and adjustments that, um, that you, uh, you brought out. So, so as I said, there's nothing major in there that we, that we need to address, correct?
I guess I'm not certain how far.
This is what we have.
Good.
Yeah, I'm trying to address that. Let us know. Yeah?
Can I address the council mayor?
You betcha.
So we have two new council members here and Mr. Rodarte is the one who just asked that question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a, a kind of a thing, a little history on the capital assets. So when I started, which was December of seventeen, the fiscal, the eighteen audit was, the seventeen audit was late at that point. It was already behind the eight. And so we didn't get it completed until, um...
Now, what was, what was that due to?
That was due to turnover in staff.
That was due to Mayor coming in and cleaning house.
And it was the Mayor coming in and cleaning house. And the way the audit, the way the fiscal, fiscal, fixed assets had always been done in the past. They were done on an Excel spreadsheet. Then those numbers were put into the accounting software and then those numbers were what were given to the auditors. Well, what can you do with an Excel spreadsheet? Whatever you want.
Okay.
Okay? Do what?
I'm following you there.
Okay, so when I came on board, I didn't know about the Excel spreadsheets because that doesn't make any sense. And so I gave them the numbers that were in the accounting software that had not been updated from the Excel spreadsheet, so they were wrong. And so we got an audit, they got an audit, we got an audit finding for that first audit fiscal year seventeen, which was late when I started. Well, it's a monumental task. We have millions and millions of dollars in fixed assets. And with me learning and then us transferring to a new accounting software, which happened a year after I started, those were the priorities at that point.
Let me ask you a quick question right there.
Go for it.
Are you, are, are, are you the sole person that's going over this or is there, you have, uh, any, any, anybody else helping you?
So I come, I came from the credit sector, so I know nothing, knew nothing about government accounting. I can't tell you that today. I know quite a bit more. And when our first audit was so late, then we brought in Patillo, Brown and Hill for the next audit and it was, none of the numbers matched from that previous audit. They had all of our beginning balances incorrect, which Patillo, Brown and Hill found for us. They suggested, and I realized too, I couldn't figure it out because I didn't know enough about our government accounting and it was so messed up. So we brought in, they were called the Loftus Group at the time, now they're called SJT Group. We brought them in as outside consultants and they have been helping us. They helped us with the accruals I was talking about earlier. They helped us get that going. Um, they are helping us with the fixed assets. We have all the fixed assets entered into our new accounting software except for land and buildings. Um, because those, you enter a little bit differently and the SJT Group is helping us to come up with those numbers and get those correct. We are in the process right now of doing a physical, physical inventory one more time before the end of this fiscal year. And then we will get with SJT Group to figure out what the journal entries need to be and the rest of the entries into the system. So that by June thirtieth, we will have actual fixed asset numbers in the system that match and they're accurate.
This new system you're putting in place that you're talking about, so that's gonna make it a lot easier?
It's gonna make it easier to track, to follow and to, once we get it in there, this huge task, once we get that finished, which like I said, we have most of it, everything entered. There's no accounting software where we'll make it. We buy something, we buy a new fire truck. You just put it right into the system and it, it tells you everything you need to know, the depreciation, the life, the dollar amount that will then make it work, so. So I'm not, I'm not trying to make excuses, but you guys need to understand the history here. And, and the progress we've made has been monumental, but we're, we're not quite there yet on fixed assets.
Well, I'm glad to catch up a little bit.
We're, we're hoping to be there by June thirtieth of this year. I'm not gonna swear we might not, it might not be perfect. We're hoping that it is, but, you know, that's, that's our hope.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, David. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Dave. Anybody else got any questions? No questions? I got a comment. When I took over as the mayor, I was scared. Because of what we had going on back in the back. We had signing checks, there's a miracle of debt. And I was nervous about it. That's why we hired Kimberly, Kim, Laura, founder. And I was nervous about it, and that's why we hired Kimberly, Kim, Laura, founder. Um, we brought in different auditors because our audit reports were not driving, and it was taking them over a year to get them in. And that's why we brought the Loftus Group in. We also brought in the Council of Governments to help us over there. And they've helped us a bunch, is that right?
Thank you.
And Kimberly has helped us a bunch, a bunch.
Good to hear.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not scared no more. I know where we're at. I know I'm not gonna go to jail for mismanaging stuff, and that's a good thing, okay? So thank you, Kimberly, and thank your staff for us, okay? No more questions on that? Next time. See ya, Dave. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so by state law, we have to approve, we have to accept and approve our audit. And so David just presented you with a synopsis of the audit. I put the actual audit in your boxes, that blue.
That would be the blue book.
The blue book. Um, it's a little bit overwhelming. Um, if you guys have any questions about it, you can ask me now, or if you wanna come by my office, do it then, either or.
I'm gonna interrupt first.
Hang on, hang on, Kimberly. Go ahead, Laura.
Go ahead, Laura.
Can Counselor Lucero and Pedia here? Kimberly, I can't hear her. Okay, so we might put her by one of the microphones, because I know I can't hear what she's saying.
Okay, let's try to get over there by Mark. How about now?
How about now?
Here.
Fifteen minutes, for ten minutes or whatever, one.
No, you can't hear her.
Hold on, just.
Hang on.
She can adjust it.
Okay.
How about now?
Can you hear me now?
No.
Speak up louder.
Come on, Mark.
Can you hear me now?
No.
One more time.
Can you hear me now? I'm doing a Verizon commercial, whatever that commercial is.
I hear nits, I hear nits, but.
Laura, can you hear?
Can you hear me, Laura?
She can't hear. Let's try that. Try it now.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
I can hear good, too.
Okay.
Okay.
So by state law, we have to accept and approve the audit. Uh, and David just gave us the audit, we read it with us. You have the blue book that I put in your, uh, boxes last week. That's the actual audit itself. If anybody has any questions on that, you can ask them now, or you can come by my office. It's a little overwhelming. Um, if not, we need to approve Resolution Twenty dash six, one, six, six, nine. It basically just says that we have complied with the state, uh, in giving an independent auditor to perform our audit, and we have accepted it. So.
Any questions on that?
Any questions on that?
I'll entertain a motion to accept Resolution Number Twenty dash sixteen sixty-nine.
David did indicate that we were kind of below, uh, standard on that based on our assets, right? That, uh, that our, uh, our assets have not been reconciled.
It's not, uh, it's our fixed assets, Rick. It's like our cars and our trucks and our buildings and, okay?
That's something we're working on?
Yes, we've been working on it for a while. And we're gonna get it together. I mean, it's just amazing what they left back there.
Sure, I know. It takes a while to get, uh, our guts in a row there, so.
Yeah, you know, Rick, we've been working on this since you came on the council.
I know, I remember that.
Yeah, so we'll have it done by this next audit, and we'll be, we'll be all right.
Okay, sounds good. That's all I have.
You bet, Rick. Thank you. Anybody else? Do I have a motion?
I'll make.
Resolution Twenty sixteen sixty-nine.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the audit as it is, uh, the other report FY nineteen.
Second. Counselor Lucero? Counselor Palio? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Next.
So the next, um, attachment that you guys will be looking at is, is the state of New Mexico local, local government budget management system. It's for fiscal year, it's for quarter three. Um, and it shows our cash and investments never change. For the two new counselors, our cash and investments column never change. Um, because we have to present those when we do our budget, and if we make changes to those, we have to do it as an adjustment, which is the seventh column over. So you'll see that five hundred, that negative five hundred thousand dollars. That's the money that we, uh, the CDs that matured in March, and that we went ahead and put into the bank account to cover the expenditures that we have for all the big projects that we have budgeted for this year. This was something that we have budgeted. We will probably do it again in, in April, um, April, beginning of May, uh, to, uh, continue to fund the projects that we have budgeted. Um, the third, the fourth column is the revenues that we received, and it's broken down by the funds. So the general fund is always first, and then so on and so forth. The transfers, the transfers, for those of you who have been here before, um, you're probably wondering, they're awful big numbers this time. And there's two reasons for that. Number one, the, the, um, adjustments that David was referring to just a minute ago, that, that we had Loftus Group help us with, to make sure that all of our balances were in line. Whenever you, whenever you do a transfer, when you take money out of the general fund and we put it into the fire protection fund for whatever reason, because to make sure that our balances are correct, it's gonna show up as a transfer. So normally our balance, our transfers are not this large, but because we had all the fiscal year nineteen ending year adjustments to get our balances correct, they're, they're bigger than they normally are. Um, and then our expenditures is the next column. And that just shows everything that we spent for the whole quarter, or what we spent as of March thirty-first, or this is for nine months. Um, the adjustment column we already talked about, and then the balance, that's the balance of every, uh, fund. We, the reserve that we have to have required by the state is only in the general fund. And so then the last column is what our balance is in every fund. And then, um, down at the very bottom, you'll see the eight point one million. That's where our threshold is for the balance of the whole city, and that's, that's pretty much in line with what we said we were gonna try to keep it at this year. It's gonna go down a little bit more as we finish up the GGI project that Paul is working on this last quarter. Um, and I believe we had it go down to around six million, Laura. Is that what we said?
I think actually we're trying to keep it around eight million.
Okay.
That's right. That's what I thought we'd say.
So we'll hope that the revenues don't, aren't, don't drop too much this next quarter, so that we can keep it down.
You know, guys, and that's something that we gotta look at, is we're down thirty percent on our revenues right now. So the adjustments that are coming at the end of the year will be, we don't have any clue yet.
Right.
We'll have to wait and see what, what comes down the pipe, if the federal government sends any money to the municipalities, to the states. But, I mean, we're not gonna freak out of it. We're good.
So does anybody have any questions on that report before we jump to the next one?
Any questions, guys? Fred? Fred Rodarte?
Thought you were saying Fred, yeah.
Fred, Pedia, you got any questions? How about you, Rick? Eric?
Just curious, where, where were you guys, where were you guys last year at this time?
We were right at ten million.
Carry going?
Yeah, we, we made a decision amongst the council before you guys came on board, that we were gonna try to keep it at eight million. That we didn't want it to go, you know, it's gonna drop a little bit below with the revenues now, but that way it covers us for anything we have coming down the pipe. It's way over what was required to keep it reserved, guys. But still, that's what we decided as a council, and that's what I'd like to see happen. Any other questions?
What is required?
I think it's like two percent of your entire budget, so it would be for us like, I don't know, twenty grand? I know it's not much, guys. It's, it's absolutely ridiculous, the low number that you have to keep.
Our required reserves are that first number on the first line, Moody, that it's, um, it's, it's one twelfth of what our.
One twelfth, there you go. That's what it was.
As of the, as of the third quarter, so nine months in, it's five hundred and eighty-three thousand. For the year, if I actually have a budget here, it's eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Eight hundred and sixty one.
And where are they, point one million?
Yeah, see, that's, we're good. Okay, no other questions? I'll entertain a motion for.
There's no motion. There's no motion. We say.
We don't need to do the Resolution Twenty.
Yeah, but I wanted to, I wanted to show you the next report real quick. The next report, that's called Income Statement. Um, this is a new report that our, uh, actually, I gave it to you last quarter. It's what our new accounting software can do. It just breaks it down a little bit better for you as far as what the budget was, what our year-to-date activity is, and then what our remaining budget is. So basically, all those numbers on the right should be around twenty-five percent. Um, you know, if they're, like, the expenses in the general fund are a little bit over, but that's okay because of all the projects that we have. Um, so this is just kind of something, uh, just for you to look through, you got questions or whatever. Just a little bit different picture than the, the first report is directed from the state. This is, this is just from our software, so anyways. And if there's no questions for that, then we couldn't do the motion yet.
Any questions? Go in once. Going twice, let's have a motion for Resolution Number Twenty sixteen seventy.
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution Twenty sixteen twenty.
Sixteen seventy.
Sixteen seventy, sorry.
Second. Lucero, second. Counselor Lucero? Counselor Palio? Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Cool, next time. Resolution Twenty sixteen seventy-two. What happened to seventy-one? Did we just decide to skip seventy-one? Gee, we're good with it. I'm just wondering.
I don't remember.
Um, don't worry about it. We're good with it. I just wondered. We don't have to have a seventy-one. Yeah, we probably did, Gee, so don't even worry about it. I just thought I'd ask. Go for it. Who's handling this one?
The Geo bonds?
I think Melinda's, Melinda's with Augustus on.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna go ahead and talk to you about this, so the council is aware that you put a tax before the general public for voting, um, recently, and we passed the general obligation bond. So this is a resolution authorizing the sale of bonds, so that we can begin that project.
Questions?
That's the one that was passed by the, by the voters, right?
Yes. Yes. In this last election.
You forgot, it's, it's for a total of two million five hundred thousand. Uh, one million five hundred thousand is for water lines and, uh, construction related to water lines, and then the one million is for sewer lines.
Now, there, there's a timeframe there, uh, Laura, from the moment that we, that it was passed till the, till the moment that it gets to come in, right?
Um, I'm not sure. Linda might be able to answer that for us, but.
Cause it takes, does it? Cause there's my understanding that it takes about a year for all that, all that financing to start coming in.
You're probably right. Um, it takes a while to do everything process, so this is our notice that we're gonna start selling. And we have, uh, another item on the agenda where we're gonna be applying to the NMFA, so that we can have them, uh, process the, the, these transactions for us. So, um, it is a process, and it takes, we're probably six months away from having everything taken care of.
Six months away from having it taken care of, and probably another six months away from money. Probably a total of a year before we see any money. Okay?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I'll entertain a motion. For Twenty sixteen seventy-two.
Can I make a motion to, uh, Resolution Twenty sixteen seventy-two?
Second. Counselor Pedia with the second. Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lucero? Counselor Palio? Thank you, guys. Next one? City contribution of, okay. You wanna have this one, or you want me to have one?
Yes, this is related to the bonds as well, and it's a resolution to put in an application for financial assistance to the New Mexico Finance Authority, and they will be helping us process the funding for these, um, water and sewer line projects.
Is that, that one related to the previous one?
Yeah, this one is authorizing the state financial people to handle the transactions that is the money.
Okay.
Rick, you got any questions? Fred, Palio? No? Eric? Fred?
No, I'm fine.
I'll entertain a motion on Resolution Twenty sixteen seventy-three.
I'll make a motion when we pass, uh, pass Resolution Twenty sixteen seventy-three.
Second. I'll second. Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Palio? Counselor Lucero? Thank you. Next one?
So this next item, um, is related to our health insurance. And it's gonna be Resolution Twenty sixteen seventy-four, but we have on the line Kyle Shoemaker and Lisa Bloom, who are with Hub, and they'll do a short presentation for you with, uh, Michelle, who's been with resources, been researching options for health insurance. We, the city has been with Maritain Insurance for, um, ages, and we, she has been looking into other options, and we have found that we could save quite a, a lot for the city's part of the premium as well as the, our staff's premium. So I'll turn it over to Kyle.
Hello?
Kyle, are you there?
Kyle, are, I see maybe he's getting on the line now? Kyle, are you on the line? Kyle? We're gonna call and see if he's having trouble dialing in. Basically, the insurance would be switched over from Maritain to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, currently, the city pays ninety percent of the premium, and the staff pays ten percent. Um, we're gonna be saving quite a lot. Um, cause have you, um, there is a sheet, there's a spreadsheet with colors. You can keep going through. Mark, keep going. Keep going. Oh, Mark's got you unmuted.
Hear that? Mark unmuted.
Okay, so I guess you can go back to the beginning. Is he unmuted?
Uh, it's, it's not muted on my side. Let's see. I'm just gonna unmute all. See what happens.
Can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you.
I just heard him.
Heard somebody.
Try it again.
Try it again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hello? Okay.
Mark, can you put the presentation up?
Yeah, I've been listening the, uh, the entire time, but I guess I couldn't speak.
It's okay, we got you now.
Alright, so I'm gonna share my screen, um, can everyone see that?
Yes.
It's there, there we go.
Can I do that? Okay. So um, the first thing I would like to introduce, Lisa Bloom and myself, uh, we both worked out of Albuquerque, New Mexico, for a company called HUB International. For a complete uh, solution for all lines of insurance coverage, but Lisa and I focus on employee benefits. So working with Laura and Michelle, we have come up with what, um, like a pretty appealing solution to, to help out um, the city, not only with funds, but with some ease of access to care. So we're just gonna go over that today, if that's alright. Quick agenda of the PowerPoint, and here we go. So um, high level here, I know that uh, you know, this was supposed to be over pretty soon, and you've talked about a lot, so I won't go into too much detail unless you would like me to. Um, what you'll see on the left is your current plan design, you are currently with Maritain and have a five hundred dollar deductible. Um, at the bottom, you'll see an estimated annual premium, this is based on the total amount of employees that you currently have. And it's about one point four million dollars. Now, our solution um, was to, to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield, and what you're gonna see is that deductible is showing twenty-five hundred. And I know that can be scary, but we've come up with a reimbursement plan. So basically, the, any member will not see any difference, they are still gonna see a five hundred dollar deductible, and actually a lower medical out-of-pocket. Um, any numbers you see at the top, the twenty-five hundreds, the five thousand, the forty-five hundred, and the nine thousand, uh, from the Blue Cross Blue Shield perspective, all of those will be subtracted by two thousand with the reimbursement plan that we've devised. So um, you know, you'll also see some other good things, like the emergency room is now gonna be a two hundred dollar copay versus a twenty percent co-insurance. Uh, co-insurance per, you know, ER visit can be thousands of dollars. Um, and you'll see at the very bottom line, moving to Blue Cross with this reimbursement plan is gonna save four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But that's not including some reimbursements that we've estimated, which I'll go over on the next page. Does anyone have any questions on this first page?
Uh, let me ask you a good question. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, my question is uh, you know, you mentioned there that there's a reimbursement figure there. Uh, the employee himself, how's he gonna see it when he gets like a medical bill or something like that? Cause the previous plan shows five hundred dollars deductible, this one shows twenty-five hundred. How's he gonna see it?
How's he gonna see it directly? So let me switch over to this next page here, and, and what we've kind of devised is um, it's called a health reimbursement arrangement. Uh, so what's gonna end up happening is that employee is going to see uh, be responsible for the first five hundred dollars of that twenty-five hundred dollar deductible. After that, um, we have found a solution with a third-party administrator to administer some reimbursement that the city would basically be reimbursing directly to the employees. Now, the benefit in this is that, as you can see, um, from an employee-only perspective, with Maritain is eight hundred dollars, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars a month. Where with Blue Cross, it's only five hundred and ninety-nine. Now, so to further answer your question, the, the second two, or the last two thousand dollars of that twenty-five hundred dollar deductible will all be reimbursed from grants to the employees now. We've done some estimates, and I've, I've estimated these on the site of caution, as in worst-case scenario, as in I've never seen it before. And if we did thirty percent of your total members, meaning fifty-two reimbursements, okay? That's gonna be a hundred and four thousand dollars, which is that number in the red that you're seeing. So this is still creating an annual savings of three hundred thousand dollars by switching to the Blue Cross plan. But not only are you saving money, currently with Maritain, St. Louis General Hospital is not in the network. So uh, by switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield, you would also have St. Louis General Hospital in your network. So you would not have to travel out of your, out of your town to receive in-network um, costs. Is this, is this reimbursement kinda making sense?
Oh, well, I wanted to cut, uh, I wanted to kinda look at it from the employee's side as to, cause sometimes, you know, you look at your insurance plans, and uh, they all look great to you, to, to a person, and it's and this, this is something that's gonna be pretty much presented to employees, so they can understand what, what, what we're doing here, right?
Exactly, yeah, actually, I will um, you know, hoping that, that um, we're able to be in-house, and at the time of this presentation, if not, we have multiple tools to communicate this otherwise, but I will be the one that will be communicating how this works to the employees. And like I said, the way that we've devised it is after five hundred dollars, there's nothing out-of-pocket for them for that deductible, and that's regarding an employee only, right? So um, everything else will, will then be taken care by the third-party administrator, as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield of New Mexico.
Hello? Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Laura, you got anything on this?
Right, Lucero.
The third-party administrators call discovery benefits, and they are um, one of HUB's, um, preferred vendors when it comes to administering um, things called HSAs, as well as reimbursement plans, as well as COBRA, which is something that we've looked into, but um, it actually seems like, um, after speaking with Laura and Michelle, that um, the third-party administrator may not be necessary in regards to the reimbursement, which would eliminate um, additional costs, it's only about three dollars per person, but um, it seems like Laura um, and Michelle feel like there is a privacy officer in in the, in the room that would be able to administer these reimbursements themselves, which would actually um, streamline the process. That, that's what we decided, right Laura?
Any other questions?
The third-party administrator, will they be necessary if, if this was, if this was not going to be able um, be handled in-house with, with these? If we do have a solution, though, if, if this becomes too difficult, we'll just call them right up, and they're, and they're aware.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Of course, um, so the next slide I'm gonna go over real quickly is some of the changes to the, the dental and the life insurance. You will see that the dental insurance is going up a little bit. Um, sixteen thousand, obviously, compared to the three hundred thousand we're talking about is pretty minuscule. Um, but we're gonna have identical, identical benefits upon your dental. And then um, for life insurance, everything is gonna be the same, a fifty thousand dollar flat life policy, except we're gonna be saving six thousand dollars there. On the next page, we have bidding, again, identical um, rate, identical um, benefit plans devised. The one difference you're gonna see is with Blue Cross Blue Shield, they're gonna guarantee these rates for forty-eight months. So that's, that's pretty um, generous, to not see a rate fluctuation for four years of any, any plan, so we're pretty excited about that. The best thing about bundling everything with Blue Cross is we're gonna save an additional two percent on your medical premiums. So if we choose to go forward with the medical, dental, vision and life, we're gonna offset another uh, roughly twenty thousand dollars in savings.
Do our employees currently have, have a vision and dental floor?
Yes.
Good.
So what we did during the bidding process, which is trying to align all of your benefits to match exactly as the way they were for minimum disruption to the employees. Now, um, the only thing that's gonna see the difference is the reimbursement plan, which they really want to see a difference. Um, and as well as they're gonna actually gain St. Louis General as, as an in-network facility, which I hope is uh, pretty relieving to not have to drive to Albuquerque.
True.
Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, Mr. Schumaker, do, where are you, are you gonna have mail-in pharmacy available? No.
No, Maritain is not seen as an in, in-house provider, basically, by Maritain. Uh, St. Louis General is not, so this would be added benefit.
And in it is, and um, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, being that you're outside of what they consider their core four-county area, you can actually come to Albuquerque and see Prescott Chirion, as well as UNMH as um, in-network facilities. Now, generally, with Blue Cross Blue Shield, if someone lives in Albuquerque, I did not go to Prescott or UNM as an in-network, it would be out-of-network for me. But being outside the four-county area, if you needed some specific procedure done at UNMH that St. Louis Gen was not able to, to handle, you can go there for in-network costs, which is a really big um, added value.
Mr. Schumaker, there's a question, um, how does this work with uh, mail-in pharmacy? I don't think he's hearing you. Mr. Schumaker? Hello? Unmuted. I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
Hello?
Can you hear me, Mr. Schumaker?
Barely.
How does this work with uh, can you hear me now?
Mine shows your microphone muted over here.
A little.
There, now it's not.
All right, Mr. Schumaker, how does this work with mail-in pharmacy? Does this, how does your, your plan work with mail-in pharmacy?
Yeah, um, there's no issues with mail-in pharmacy. Um, you will see, I just switched back to that slide. So there is a zero-dollar copay drug. Um, but generally speaking, the mail order has its own line right there. So if you're using um, generic drugs that Blue Cross approves for a zero-dollar copay, you can get a ninety-day supply of zero dollars. Other than that, your next tiers are listed right there.
Alright, well, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no problem, Kim.
So what's your thoughts on this? Are you interested in having uh, Michelle switch over to this program, and then in your packet, you have a resolution. Uh, if we're gonna change the percentage of what the city's gonna cover, um, we have a resolution in there, and we, we support either way. Right now, we cover ninety percent. And the staff cover fifteen, or we could, I'm sorry, ninety-ten, or we could go to eighty-five, fifteen. So it's, it's up to the council if you wanna switch, now would be the time. Because the premiums are being lowered enough, it, there won't be much of a notice.
You know, guys, my feeling on this is we don't pay, pay our employees a lot of money. And this insurance is a benefit to them and a way to recruit people at ninety-ten. But I'm good with ever, whatever you guys wanna do, I'm good with. But as the mayor, I support the ninety-ten for our employees.
Give it the way it is, that's what you do.
Yeah, ninety-ten, but we switch over to Blue Cross Blue Shield. Okay, keep the ninety-ten, but switch over to Blue Cross Blue Shield. That's my recommendation, guys.
Laura, if we adopt this um, uh, how, how long will it take to implement it?
We would start enrolling staff, and it would begin July first. We would transfer those over to uh, July first.
Okay, well, tell the truth, I like your, I like your idea.
Cause we don't pay them a bunch.
Oh, yeah, I, I certainly do approve that.
Uh, Fred, you got anything, Paliya?
I don't make that much money, guys, so I, I'm off with ninety-ten.
Good, Fred, Rick?
Fred, Rick? Yeah, I, I uh, I'm online with the ninety-ten as well.
About you, Eric?
Yeah, ninety-ten, that's pretty generous, that's.
Yeah, you know, and like I said, because we don't, we really don't pay our employees a bunch of money, guys, we give them some good benefits. But as far as comparing to the private sector, we're not even close.
No, we're good.
But with our insurance and, and our retirements, guys, we're way above them, the private sector, so that's how we use it to recruit people. And I mean, it's a good recruiting tool.
Now, how would I change these numbers?
What do you mean?
Well, if we're gonna, the, the proposal is eighty-five percent, right? We're, we're, we're saying ninety.
Yeah, we're gonna, we will say here tonight, we'll make the vote, if you guys wanna go with the ninety percent, and then they'll print us a new one, and we'll sign that.
Okay.
Okay, that's all. Yes, we're still saving blue-crew money, guys.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we're still saving a bunch of money for Maritain. But like I said, this is a, a recruiting tool for us.
Okay.
And like I said, we, we don't pay much, but.
Oh, I agree with that.
Our benefits are pretty good. So on that note, I'll entertain to change to Blue Cross Blue Shield at ninety-ten?
With HUB International, right?
Yeah, Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that, go ahead.
Go ahead, Fred, Fred Paliya. Second.
I'll second it.
Fred, Fred Rudarte's second. Counselor Rick Lucero. Counselor Fred Paliya. Counselor Eric Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Fred Rudarte.
Yes.
Cool, thank you, guys. Uh, so we need to pass resolution twenty sixteen seventy-four, right?
Yes, that was it.
That was it, right?
Yes, with the change.
With the change.
So let's go ahead, let's change that, as we do the motion, Fred, to, to uh, accept resolution twenty sixteen seventy-four with the recommended changes for the council.
I make a motion that we accept resolution twenty that sixteen seventy-four with a change.
Second.
Second.
I second. Eric Garcia. Counselor Rudarte.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Counselor Garcia. Counselor Lucero. Counselor Paliya. Thank you. Mosquito control. Who's handling this one, Laura?
Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Kyle and Lisa. So after mine is mosquito control. And um, we could have been out a few years ago, and we only um, had one. Um, one company that put in a bid, it was Roadrunner Public Health. They've been doing what we consider our vector control for many years in, uh, throughout the county, not just in grants. Um, it's time to renew their contract. Our contract allows for us to uh, go up to four years with this company. They've done a wonderful job, they've been very responsive to any needs that we have. Uh, in fact, they, they've already started, they started in February doing up monitoring. They started their applications in March. We, we already have mosquitoes, I couldn't believe, he said, he said we have mosquito in March, and then I actually saw some, and I got a phone call today from a citizen who said she saw mosquitoes around her home. So they are up there, and um, this company is very responsive, so um, he has kept the same price with us for several years, it is eighty-six thousand. And he actually starts in February, and goes through, I believe, the summer, and then through September. And we're very responsive, any, any requests we have, they go out and, and put applications immediately. He does some preventive work, um, like treating ground, and then they do the fogging through neighborhoods, and they've also treated some of the athletic fields throughout town. So I'm asking for your approval.
Go ahead, Rick.
Are they um, have they started on the golf course? Cause there's uh, you know, as you all know, it's play today.
You go, Rick.
There's long mosquitoes out there. So we need to.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I know that they've already started, so we can make sure he knows that we've already got a problem there.
Okay, thank you.
And he turfs, he does the tree turf like. Yeah, same guy, Fred.
Yes.
Yeah. Any other questions? Go ahead, Laura.
The thing we're doing as a city is we're cutting down a lot of the weeds along the sides of the road. Um, he has been very good to advise us, and he said that will help because the mosquitoes nest and breed and all those weeds, and and then um, we're sucking up uh, any standing water that we see throughout town, and then we're encouraging citizens to do the same in their own yards. We did.
Yes. Yes, we did. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion for eighty-six thousand three hundred dollars to Roadrunner Public Health for mosquito control. Go in once. Always wants. Fred Palia makes the motion. Who's got the second?
I'll second.
Eric Garcia's got the second. Counselor Rovarte.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Palia. Counselor Lucero. Make my day. Next, we've got uh, the City of Grants Proclamation, the American Legion Family National Poppy Day. Expressing support for the designation on May twenty-fourth as a national poppy date in the City of Grants and recognizing the importance of honoring those who have worn our nation's uniform. And whereas poppies are worn and displayed as a symbolic tribute to our fallen and the future of the living veterans and service members. And whereas at the end of World War One, the American Legion adopted the poppy as a symbol of freedom and of the blood sacrificed by the troops in wartime. This symbolic, the symbolic use of the poppy comes from a poem in Flanders Fields, which movingly begins, "In Flanders Fields, the poppies blow between the crosses, row on row", referring to the poppies that sprang up in the churned-up earth of the newly dug soldiers' graves over parts of Belgium and France. Whereas the American Legion family has long utilized the red poppy as its official flower, symbolizing the bloodshed by those who have served in the United States military. And it is a fitting that as the American Legion celebrates its hundredth anniversary, they expand the meaning of the symbolism of the poppy, mirroring the manner in which the poppy is symbolically showcased in England and Canada in celebratory fashion on the Remembrance Day, also known as Armistice Day and Poppy Day. And whereas wearing a poppy will unite citizens from across the country who decide to show their patriotism, and whereas May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty would be an appropriate day to designate the National Poppy Day. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Martin Hicks, Mayor of the City of Grants, support the designation of May twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty as a National Poppy Day. And encourage all citizens, residents and visitors in the City of Grants to join in observing this day to honor our, every service member who has died in the name of liberty, freedom and democracy, while also showing support for living veterans, service members and their families. And I am gonna sign this right now to make Poppy Day, May twenty-fourth. Any comments on that? I got one. Thank God for all the men that have served and died so that we can breathe free air. Oh, okay, number eleven, Management of Future Foundations Family Center. Laura, you gonna handle this one?
Yes. Um, the Future Foundations Family Center Board of Directors contacted myself. Um, for the last probably year, they struggled with keeping a director or hiring, uh, recruiting a director. And so they just had another director resign this last couple of weeks and so they're asking the city if they would like to take over the programs. Um, a couple of years ago, the city gave the building to, um, I mean, the county gave the building to the city. So we actually own the building, but we have a contract with Future Foundations, a nonprofit, to manage it. Our recreation program is already housed there and have been for years. Um, they work together with other uh, departments that are housed there, such as the family center staff and for private programs. So if we were to absorb um, the Future Foundations programs, it would be the after-school program and some additional summer programs. Currently, they have two staff, a custodian and an administrative secretary. And they also have another part-time individual who runs their farmer's market that works during the farmer's market season, a couple of hours here and there. So um, it would be very easy for us to absorb their, their couple of staff under our rec department and to take over uh, at, at the after-school and summer programs to our rec department. Um, I think the programs the center provides are very important and they have a lot for our community. I'm gonna recommend to them that they keep their nonprofit board functioning so that they can continue with our assistance to apply for the various prevention grants that they've obtained over the years. They, they typically obtain funding for teen pregnancy prevention, alcohol prevention, uh, obesity prevention, all kinds of youth and family programs. And so I think um, with some of the talent we have currently and a couple of their staff who can continue applying for that funding. A lot of the applications are fairly simple, um, and they have, uh, we've got two staff on board right now that are very good at organizing paperwork and um, writing skills where they could do some of the reporting. So it would be my recommendation that we absorb that program.
Any questions?
I got one, Nora. Uh, who, who's currently managing the, the Future Foundation? Or that outfit?
They, it's the Family Center Board and they hired um, a director. Uh, many of you may remember, I was the director for fourteen years before I came over to the city. And I've been here five years, so um, since I left, they've been through three different directors. And the most recent one was only on for maybe two months and resigned. And so um, the, they have a, a board of directors of about seven people that are on their board.
So they're basically, they're independent at this point, right?
They are, they're an independent nonprofit.
So then they would come under, under the umbrella of the City of Grants, if, if we, if we adopt this, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And here's, here's my, here's my thoughts on this, guys. These are our kids. This is our town. We have anywhere, luckily, from one hundred to three hundred kids that go in that place almost every day. And therefore, I don't have a problem taking it over. I would like to see them continue with the grants to pay their own way. But whoever we hire and put in there, we'll be a city employee and we will pay them a city check, we will get city benefits. Okay, but like I said, these are our kids and we need to continue this program without a doubt. That's my opinion, guys.
I have no further questions.
Yes, um, that's what we do. Um, we would put it under our Director of Recreation and utilize um, their staff to assist. We probably, under the rec, we already hired several part-time people under the rec program to help with basketball and football and various programs. So we might need to hire um, a couple additional part-time staff for programs periodically throughout the year. We would just include it as one of the recreation programs, like we run basketball or.
Yeah, like a referee or something. Like a referee, yeah, that'll work. Any other questions? I got a better idea. Let's just take that contract, Fred. And let's get rid of OMI and then we got four hundred thousand dollars recurring every, every money, every year that we're not giving away to Denver. That makes more sense than charging them rent. Their contract will be up next month, guys. We'll have it on the agenda next month sometime, one of the two meetings, I'm sure, right, Nora?
Yes.
Yeah, we're coming up on that, guys. And that's, that's what I wanna see happen with OMI. Jacobs, whatever they call it this week. Anything else, Fred? I mean, we can charge them rent if you want, bro.
So, so getting the, the, the Recreation Department, um, with the kids and everything over there at, um, the Future Foundation, I mean, it's, everything is gonna be run there. There's the baseball program, the football program, the soccer, everything's running there. I mean, that's all the city. Is that right, Laura?
Yes, it would be facilitated out there, although, yes, it, it would, soccer is a different association that does soccer, but um, we already have several programs. We do the football, the basketball, um, we have Bud in the Sun. We have quite a few summer programs and they typically have two. They didn't apply for the youth conservation program, so that one won't be available this summer. It hires teenagers to do projects of lasting value in the community, but that's something, the deadline for that is coming up in July. We get work to apply for that again and it, it provides summer youth jobs.
That's what I wanted to hear, Laura, cause I knew we lost that grant and I wasn't very happy about that, cause those guys do some good work for us. Any other questions?
No questions.
I'll entertain a motion to take over the management of Future Foundations Family Center.
I'll make a motion that we take over the management of the Future Foundations Family Center.
Thank you, Fred, second. Fred Palia with the second. Counselor Palia. Counselor Lucero. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
The last one on here, guys, is the emergency declaration that I did last week. Um, I'm asking you to support me on this and the executive order. Um, you guys have seen what, what happened today. And we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward as long as you guys are, are in, going with this, guys. Any questions? Are we good to go with this?
Pardon me, I'm just, I'm fine.
Fred?
I'll make a motion that we pass the emergency declaration.
Second. Counselor Rovarte?
Yes.
Counselor Garcia? Counselor Lucero? Counselor Palia? Okay, thank you, guys, very much. I appreciate your support and so does the people of State of Mexico. Uh, Laura, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Uh, comments from the council. Rick, you got anything?
Yeah, um, you know, after playing golf today with uh, some people that have played the course and you, had you all, we're open tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, I had a few approach if uh, we're gonna start utilizing the golf course, you know, the golf courses you uh, is, is uh, not taking advantage of those funds. Is that something that we can implement too?
What, what are you talking about? Taking care of, of what funds, Rick?
Golf carts, uh, you know, selling golf carts to customers.
Oh, yeah, um, I was discussing that with Laura today and in order to keep the social distancing, we're looking at maybe next Monday, Rick, depending how it goes, but we're gonna start ran them out to one person at a time. So if there's three of you playing golf, you'll each have your own golf cart.
Yeah, that's what we're doing when this all first started, right?
Okay, so.
Yeah, because city can try using some of those uh, those monies to bring in.
That'll work. I agree, Rick. And we'll look at it on, I don't know, if you, if you want to. Rick, you're out there more than any of us. So, I mean, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, I've been walking a lot, so a lot of, you know, everybody's walking, but uh, so uh, there's a few people looking forward to those carts being uh, brought out again.
Yeah, and I spoke to Rouse Chavez and he's an old veteran that can hardly walk, so we'll look at that real quick, Rick, and we'll, I'll let you know. Okay? Anything else, Fred? You got anything? Fred Palia? I don't.
He's talking about the sewer going through the, the miller.
Oh, you're talking about Milan?
Yeah, yeah, that's what he's talking about.
Where are we at on that one, Laura?
We um, we need to compare their meter readings to what they're currently paying. We were, we were told we were gonna get meter readings from their side. They had installed their own meter because they um, thought that our meter was not accurate. And Mark tried to obtain some readings, I believe in the last couple of months, but um, I believe they told him that the line had been cut on it, so it wasn't working. So I think I need to sit with our staff and, and look at what they're currently paying compared to the actual readings. And I, I'm gonna guess that it's, they're not paying as much as the actual readings show they should be paying.
Oh, I'll guarantee that. They never have. Yeah, Fred, I agree with you. I agree with you a hundred percent on that one, Fred. We need to go ahead and hold Milan accountable.
Okay, another thing, uh, Laura, we have to look into the cemetery. We ran out of water, I know. We finished, we just started to fill out the new area. And uh, in other words, get, get some water.
Get a new area ready to go, Fred?
Yeah, we need to, if our budget can manage it, we um, we need to start um, lining out the next section and then in addition, soon, we need to start looking at probably additional property. For cemetery plot. The other thing we're considering, um, purchasing one or two um, urn, urn wall. I think we could, uh, uh, quite easily utilize urn walls that will um, incorporate several pots off that are going uh, vertical instead of horizontal.
And you're talking about the pre-nations there, right? I like that idea.
Yes.
Anything else, Fred? We'll work on that. Rick, you got anything?
Um, you know, I, uh, talked with Mark, uh, Mr. Teshma a few weeks back, um, are we still, are, are we still budgeting for some of the sewer lights for some of the areas, um, that need them?
Yes. Yes, we are. We're gonna put one on the tank, Rick, and then we're gonna put those other ones in your park that you wanted there on that south end of Mesa. Because they look to be working pretty dang good so far. I've been making it a point to go down to the park at night and they do light up pretty well.
Yeah, there's a couple other streets where some of the uh, constituents are wanting some off of uh, Ash. Just behind uh, uh, you know, my Ash is just off of Roosevelt.
Yeah. Yeah, Mark's shaking his head, yeah. Yeah, we got fifty thousand for that light on, right? We got fifty thousand on that light on there. Okay? Mr. Rovarte?
Got a question for you, Laura. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I thought, I was uh, wondering if there's anything uh, within the city or I, I don't know how appropriate the question is, but uh, uh, you know, the federal government has said that they've passed stimulus money to help businesses. And I know that probably.